Candidate forums in advance of the August 23 primary election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters, of the Tallahassee Democrat, and of WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, District 5. I'm Regan McCarthy from WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined today by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat, and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics. Let's get a quick look at the ground rules and meet the candidates.
Thank you all for joining us. The candidates for County Commission, District 5, sitting left to right in alphabetical order, are Paula DeBose Johnson, David O'Keefe, Jay Revel, and Dustin Rivest. Welcome. For those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. Here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds. You'll hear that some questions will vary, they'll be a little shorter, maybe 45, or a little longer, a minute and 30 in a couple. Sometimes we also have shorter follow-up questions. We will keep time, and we have a very high-tech solution. When you will know that you've hit your time, we will ding a bell, and it will sound like [bell] Um, and I've lost my spot. Uh, in the middle, when that bell rings, you don't have to come to an immediate stop, but please finish your answer, wrap up your sentence, we move on. In the middle of the forum, we will have a lightning round, where we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, we will give you 90 seconds to make the case directly to voters, and share your website or any other important information.
And if you're watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type that into the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is limited, so you can improve your chances of having the question heard if you keep the question brief, polite, and make it applicable to all of the candidates. So candidates, before we begin, do you have any questions?
No.
Great, then let's jump in with the first question.
Great, our first question of the day will go to each candidate will get a chance to answer the question, but we'll start with Paula DeBose Johnson, and we'll give you a minute each to answer this question. That first question is, what is the number one issue affecting District 5, and why?
Affordable housing and jobs. I don't think there's just one issue. We've heard public outcry about the needs here, and we see it every day as we drive through our community. People need great jobs. They need jobs that pay them a living wage, so that they can take care of their families, so that they can show dignity here. Everyone wants to contribute. So I would say with that, we also need to talk about crime. So I don't think there's just one pressing issue, there are many issues that we have to tackle here in District 5.
Thank you.
David, that next question to you, same question to you.
In a way, I agree with Paula here. The number one issue is the number one issue in our district, in our county, and across our state. Affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, specifically affordable rental housing. The reason this is so important to me is because growing up, my parents went to medical bankruptcy, eventually lost our family home, and so I know the stress that has on families just trying to get through the day. We cannot continue to do small, little programs to try to improve housing here and there. We have to employ all the tools available to us, including making it a top priority whenever we're making decisions on zoning and comp plan changes.
Jay Revel, same question to you.
Well, thanks again for having us today. This is a wonderful opportunity to have a conversation with each other in the community. And I would echo the sentiments of both Paula and David, but I would add that, you know, we have to grow in a way that works for everyone. In the east side of our town, which is where District 5 really is constituted, is where the growth is heading in the future of our community. You look around Leon County, there's a lot of places in our hometown that don't have that much capacity left for growth, and there's a huge, huge amount of growth and development that's going to be coming out the Mahan Corridor, the Park Avenue Corridor, the Appalachia Parkway Corridor. That's all happening right now. And the way in which we address our housing needs, our jobs needs, and battling economic disparity in our district is going to be managing that growth in a way that works for everyone. I think that's the number one thing I hear about when I'm talking with people.
Thank you. And Dustin Rivest, same question to you.
Absolutely. I think affordable housing and jobs and poverty are a community issue, not necessarily just a District 5 issue. And I'll echo what Jay said. I think the biggest thing that's, if you want to talk about just District 5, is the foreseeable growth we're going to see in District 5. You look at what's happening out on Buck Lake and Mahan, then out on the Parkway with all the attention with, you know, national developers coming in. I think we need to have a focus on how do we grow smartly and sustainably, and I think that's going to be a District 5 issue that other districts may not be facing in the foreseeable future, at least at the scale it is. When you look at the Amazon coming in, and the ancillary businesses, and the things that are going to happen to our roadways and our neighborhoods as we grow as a community, I think those are the issues that are going to be most prevalent in the years to come.
Thank you, Dustin Rivest. We're going to switch over to affordable housing, go a little bit deeper on what a couple of candidates have mentioned. What is the first specific action you would take, the first specific action you would take to address the need for affordable housing beyond what is already being done? You have one minute, and we are starting with...
Mr. O'Keefe.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Thank you. We have made some efforts, but they're not enough. The major, one specific thing we can immediately start is replicating the success of recent income-based rental housing complexes. Right here in District 5, the Lafayette Gardens complex was put up recently in a way that fits the community and the neighborhood it's built in. It's near public transit, it's near grocery stores and jobs, it's safe and attractive, and it is freeing up the market-based apartment rental units when people move into these income-based units. By putting money and zoning decisions and clearing the way for any developers who want to do that type of income-based project, we need to make sure that's where we focus, because that puts downward pressure on market rate rental rates, and it creates a virtuous cycle of continuously expanding affordable rental housing.
Thank you, David O'Keefe. Jay Revel, tell us what specific action you would take to address the need for affordable housing in your area.
You know, I think one of the things that a lot of different people from different backgrounds will agree on in our community right now, particularly if you're talking about someone who's trying to implement affordable housing, or even a developer, or just a community member who's trying to add on maybe to their house, but our zoning laws and our codes don't really work that well when it comes to trying to make affordable housing a real livable option in our community. You know, I think you have to always go back to some of the root causes of a problem, and we all agree that affordable housing is a huge issue in our community, yet I haven't seen our local government really go into the laws that govern how we grow and how we build things, and say, hey, we've probably got some issues here, and some changes that need to be made. So I think the first thing we have to do is a very thorough vetting and examination of our zoning laws and our codes to make sure that we actually have what we need in place to develop things in an affordable fashion.
Thank you. Dustin Rivest.
Yeah, I think we have to look at all the elements of affordable housing, and ask ourselves what role does local government play in this. You know, if we're talking about local housing, or affordable housing, you know, I think we need to start looking at some of the resources that the county and the city owns currently, whether that be land, and we look at developing that for affordable housing, or looking at, you know, structures that are already built, and how can we retrofit those structures that are owned by the county or the city if we can't find ways to house people? But it's a completely different conversation when it comes to affordable homeownership. Houses are just simply not cheap right now, and we have a supply issue. There's not enough supply in our community. And so we've got to find ways to develop, and as Jay was saying, it's pretty difficult to build in our community despite what some people actually think, developers being the big bad wolf. You know, our comp plan is entirely too large for a municipality our size. Ask other developers from outside of the state and outside of the areas of Tallahassee, and they'll tell you this comp plan is by and large larger than most other municipalities our size.
Thank you, Mr. Rivest. Paula DeBose Johnson, same question to you. Finish us off.
Thank you. Our opponents, my opponents are not wrong. It is important that we review the policy. We know that most of our Floridians spend more than 50% of their income just on housing. That is not affordable for people that are not already making a living wage. So we do need to review the policy, we do need to check out the zoning laws, but we also need to ensure that we're expanding our ship funds. There's an opportunity to do that with the county. We already utilize those dollars, we're looking at the Sadowski Fund, those ship dollars come from that fund. We can ensure that the people that need housing get that if we pay more attention to housing policy.
Thank you.
All right, our next question, we're changing gears a little bit, is inspired from the Urban League. By our count, on tallahassee.com, 12 people have been killed and 46 have been injured in 71 serious shootings this year in the capital city and county. Just recently, two people were injured in two drive-by shootings an hour apart, and on Friday, two men were seriously injured during a party in a large crowd at a town hall. What specific initiatives will you take to make our communities safe from crime? Jay Revel, you have the first shot, or first crack at this question.
I appreciate that question, and I think...
And you have a minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you very much. I think first and foremost, we have to realize that these problems that are occurring with violent crime are often acts of desperation of people who are having very stern challenges in their lives, and they're resulting to these types of actions because they haven't found another path. I think it's our duty as a local government, as a community as a whole, to try to give people as many paths and hopeful opportunities in their lives as possible. I'm on the board of directors for Goodwill Industries of the Big Ben, and I've seen the power of giving people a hand up, giving them a career path, giving them purpose, and helping to build community in places where it's hard sometimes to do so. And I think that if we're going to make big strides in that world of violent crime, that we have to be able to go in and have real human conversations with people, try to find where their biggest needs are, and help them find a better path that doesn't include making choices that alter your life forever. And I'm a big, big believer that you have to build community from the ground up that way, and that's where I believe we should be focusing more of our attention.
Thank you. Dustin Rivest, same question.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. I agree, mental health, good jobs, affordable housing, they all work towards fixing poverty. You know, if we look at the crime in our community, I think you'll see a direct correlation with the poverty that we're also seeing. One thing that I would, I would work to come up with initiative, I think we need more awareness for personal protection and self-defense as well. When's the last time we've seen the county or the city put on anything about personal protection or self-defense, other than, you know, PPE and stuff like that for COVID? You know, imagine if we had resources that were around self-defense, no matter where you're at, no matter what walk of life, no matter what age you are, you know, you could sign up or take classes for self-defense and personal protection. I'd like to see more around that conversation, so that when things do arise, maybe there's more people that are personally able to handle situations.
Thank you. Paula DeBose Johnson, same question.
Well, we know that there's a correlation between poverty and crime, and we also know that the research tells us that if you provide people opportunity, making sure that they have access to education, skills training, ensuring that they have opportunities to participate in our economy through jobs, making sure that there are great pro-social activities out there for young people. They've told us consistently what they want. They want good jobs, they want to be able to have a place to go, and just be with each other where it's safe for them. They've said this time and time again, and we've limited the opportunity for those spaces for those young people. Also, personal responsibility is also important, and we have Neighborhood Watch, we have Crime Watch. When we see something happening within our communities, we also have a personal responsibility to take care of those things or to say something. So again, the answer would be making sure that there's access to education and jobs, making sure that young people have a place to go where it's safe, and making sure that we say something when we see something within our communities. And if there's an opportunity for us to report crime, we should absolutely do it. But our folks will not report crime if they don't think that their, that their family members will be safe when they report those crimes.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
You know, Paula has it right when she talks about needing to provide supportive, safe spaces and services for youth. This is clearly a huge problem, because everyone in our community deserves to feel safe, and violent crime is certainly a threat to that. We are very fortunate here that our sheriff's office and community partners have developed a research-based report and suggested solutions in the Anatomy of a Homicide Report. And I really commend them for that, digging into the root causes and long-term solutions. And most of those solutions, we talk about are evidence-based with proven results to intervene and provide supportive services to children early in their life before they end up on a path that often leads to crime. And when we invest in our children early, it not only prevents crime, but it creates happy, healthy, and community-oriented adults and families. And so this is an example of putting early investment in to prevent long-term problems and dividends being paid for decades in all areas of our community. And I would fully fund and make sure that we put all our efforts behind the solutions in the Anatomy of a Homicide Report.
Thank you. And I'm going to do a 30-second follow-up on this. Looking for a 1 to 10 rating on the effectiveness of TPD and LCSO in stemming the violence. We will start with you, Dustin Rivest.
I would say we're at about a seven and a half, eight. I believe we have great law enforcement officers in our community doing their best every single day, but we have to realize it takes more than just law enforcement. It takes a community, as Paula was, Neighborhood Watch is seeing something, say something, do something about it. We've got to open up our hearts and check on our neighbors, check on our friends, check on our family members that we haven't seen in a while. Once we do that, I think we'll see a big positive change, and the faster we can get from an eight to a 10, the faster our community will kind of turn this corner.
Thank you. Paula DeBose Johnson, same question.
I would say about an eight. I'm part of the TPD Citizens Advisory Committee, and that's one of the things that we always talk about, bridging the gap between community and law enforcement. Law enforcement can't do it by themselves, so we are a partner in that. So I would give our law enforcement an eight.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
I'm running for County Commission, and the police department under Tallahassee is not something we are overseeing, so I'm not comfortable rating them. That being said, crime is not only a law enforcement issue, it's a community issue, and we shouldn't put all the responsibility on law enforcement to fix the issue. That being said, I think Sheriff Walt McNeil is doing a great job in long-term solutions and research-based solutions, and I give him a nine out of 10.
Thank you. Jay Revel?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the sentiments here so far. I would give our law enforcement a nine on enforcing the law. I think they do a wonderful job there. I think that, to echo some of those other points that have been made, it really is going to require our entire community to combat these challenges. I don't think we do a good enough job coming together to come up with creative ways to give people pathways of hope, so that they're not making choices that result in these life-altering decisions.
Thank you.
Great, and we'll move on to our next question. This question delves into the issue of poverty. Each candidate will have one minute to answer this question, and we'll start with you, Paula DeBose Johnson. That question is, numerous neighborhoods within Tallahassee and the Leon County area are struggling with poverty. What role should local economic development efforts and development incentives play in promoting more equitable prosperity? And what's one specific plan you would implement to make meaningful progress in this generational challenge?
Can you read the question for me? I didn't hear the last part.
Sure.
Can you read the entire question again, please?
Yes, one more time. Numerous neighborhoods within the Tallahassee and Leon County area are struggling with poverty. What role should local economic development efforts and development incentives play in promoting more equitable prosperity? And what's one specific plan you would implement to make meaningful progress in this generational challenge?
So I, we have a lot of different programs within the city and the county where they partner, CHSP, and a lot of that work is to push people out of poverty with funding. I would expand that funding. I would also, the same thing we keep saying back and forth, jobs. All of this is an opportunity to move people out of poverty when we're talking about giving people a way to earn a living with dignity. We need, we need a living wage for people. So I would increase the funding that we currently have in place, we can expand those funds, and I would also give people a pathway to make sure that they're able to earn a living.
Thank you. David O'Keefe, same question to you.
This is where I run the risk of being the boring accountant on the stage, and this is because using money in our county resources, it's all about priorities. We only have so much, and when we misuse economic development dollars for other special and special interest projects, we lose out on money that could be directed to these communities. So the one thing I would do is work to redirect and reform the Office of Economic Vitality's efforts, from bringing out-of-town hotels and businesses, to going into these neighborhoods and communities, identifying what needs and community goods and services are not currently being met by the private market, and then spend all their effort on developing those businesses in that community with those people in local businesses. Benefit of that is, we still create those jobs we've always wanted, we fill gaps in goods and services our communities need, and, most importantly, the people in that community benefit from owning and owning equity in those businesses. And that is how you create jobs, like we all talk about, and enrich the communities.
Thank you. Jay Revel, same question to you.
It may sound boring sometimes to talk numbers, right? But I think we need to talk about math and numbers and personal finance a lot more in our community. Now, I think about our libraries and our community centers, and what an opportunity we have there to actually help our residents and neighbors learn about numbers, because that's, if you want to build a pathway out of poverty for yourself, you want to find that leg up, you want to find that opportunity, job training, you need to have a place where you can go and learn those things. And I think that's something we should do as a county government, is actually teach people how to build pathways out of poverty. On the other side, I agree with what David said. We just went through this entire exercise, about $27 million for a football stadium, and that's not what those dollars were designed for. I know we'll speak about that more soon, but those dollars need to be oriented to projects that put people to work, that pay high wages, and that give us an opportunity to grow our economy in a way that works for everybody.
Thank you. And then Dustin Rivest, same question for you.
Short answer is obviously to create more jobs, but currently, we have a lot of job openings in Tallahassee. And so the question is, is do we not have enough people who are educated for those job positions? And is that in career technical education, is it in, you know, four-year degree secondary, you know, schooling? One plan that I would implement right now is to put a GED program in place. I would like to see it at least three different places in Tallahassee, every single weekend, a place where people in the community can come and get their GED. I believe it's between one, about one in five people in our community don't have a GED. So what does that mean? Why is that important? Well, if you don't have a GED, you're not going to Lively Technical College and applying for federal grant money to help pay for your education, you're not going to TCC, and, you know, if you can go there and apply for the federal grant for your education, you can also get Pell Grant money to help you actually afford living while you're getting that education to a different job. So I think we have a lot of work to do, but I think we also have to realize that it's going to take business development and business growth to fix this issue.
Great, and that brings us into a quick follow-up on that question. Each candidate will have about 30 seconds to answer this question, and David O'Keefe, we'll start with you. We've heard a lot about a workforce and jobs crisis in Tallahassee and Leon County. How do we bring new jobs to Leon County, particularly when new development is often criticized as changing the character of the county?
We can develop local businesses and jobs. When I talk about goods and services and needs that the private market is not meeting in Tallahassee, think about medical specialists, or anyone with any kind of special condition, they're driving to Tampa, Jacksonville, or Shands, and that's an embarrassment as the capital city of our population size. Think about the lack of affordable childcare. There's no reason our economic development can't be at developing those businesses' services in our community that bring jobs and ownership of businesses in our community and keep money there.
Great. 30 seconds for you, Jay Revel.
I actually just made my first hire at My Business last week, which is very exciting, and the biggest challenge that that employee has been facing is finding childcare so that she can come to work. It's a really great point, that there are thousands of opportunities to create small businesses in our community, and we need to do a better job of getting out of the way and encouraging those people to find those opportunities, go and develop them, and really find a pathway to create their own economic personal viability. I think we can do that, we can certainly do a better job.
Same question to you, Dustin Rivest.
Thank you. I think the elephant in the room is going to be the Amazon development and the jobs that's coming down the road. It's on District 5's line, right off Mahan and I-10. But a question would be, is how many local businesses are actually going to be selling a product at Amazon and selling outwardly? I'd like to see us focus on helping more local businesses grow outwardly than us trying to bring more businesses to Tallahassee. I think there is a huge opportunity to grow our local businesses and sell services outward. One third of my company's sales last year came from outside of Leon County. How do we bring more money into the county? What I would be doing.
And Paula DeBose Johnson.
Two things. One, if you don't grow, you die, but you can have controlled growth, growth that makes sense. And also, I agree, supporting our small businesses, ensuring that they get what they need. But I just also want to point out for the beginning, the very first part of this question, we have all of these things that my opponents are mentioning, maybe they just don't know that these resources are out there, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And another 30-second follow-up on this series of questions. This time, we'll start with Jay Revel. Question is, homelessness is also becoming a more visible problem in Leon County. What's one thing we can do to help on that front?
I think we need a regional mental health facility. You know, just last week, we had the news story of someone who left the Appalachia Center and went into Books-A-Million and stabbed someone. Obviously, that's someone who was going through probably quite a bit of mental anguish. But if you think about the Big Ben, we tend to be a little bit isolated. Leon County, 300,000 people here, sort of an island, if you will, in a sea of rural. We need to create a regional mental health facility to help treat people and give them a pathway to get off the street.
Dustin Rivest.
I can't agree more. One thing I do think that we need to add is more caseworkers at places like the Kearney Center. Right now, if you go over there and ask any of them, there's not enough of them. There's a lot of people who go to the Kearney Center for homelessness, and they don't have a home. They have a job, they're making money, but they don't have enough money for first and last month's rent as a deposit or utilities deposit. And so I think if we look inwardly at the people who are experiencing this boots-on-the-ground, we'll find some answers.
Paula DeBose Johnson.
We need more public-private partnerships. There's opportunities to renovate a lot of these older hotels, these old apartment buildings, office buildings, where we can actually house our homeless. So there's sale program funding. Again, lots of opportunities where we can use federal money, we can use state appropriations, draw that money down here in the county and use that to renovate some of these older structures, so that we can house our homeless.
Great. And David O'Keefe, your answer.
We need to build more temporary and transitional housing. Specifically, we need to develop evidence-based and provenly successful and effective, housing-first transitional housing programs. We cannot continue to treat people who are neighbors, who live on the street, as a nuisance. These are valuable community members who only need a stable place to transition into a permanent job, a permanent housing, and a permanent contributing member of our community.
Great, thank you. Let's talk about economic development a little bit more here. So funds from the penny sales tax program, known as Blueprint, are required to be allocated into different pots and used for different purposes. While most of the funds are to be spent for infrastructure, such as roads, sidewalks, and parks, 12% of the funds are to be spent on economic development projects having a general public purpose of improving local economies. So what was your position on the recent allocation of $27 million to renovate Doak Campbell Stadium from the money required to be spent for economic development projects? Please explain your answer, and Dustin Rivest, we'll be starting with you, one minute, please.
Thank you for that question, and it's a hot topic, and I wish our community would live and learn from it and move on. It's, you know, we keep talking about the same issue, and it's money spent, and it's money gone. I don't think we're clawing any of it back. I think what we need to do is focus on increasing the tax base and making sure our tax rates don't go up. I'm talking about property taxes, and how do we do that? I kind of alluded to it earlier with, we need to focus on how do we grow our local businesses to bring more dollars into the community? How do we help them sell at Amazon? How do we help them expand their services into Marianna and Perry, you know, about also some areas, you know, within 50 to 100 miles? I think if we look that direction, and we spend our economic development dollars on initiatives that help our local businesses do that, I think we'd be in a better position.
Thank you. Paula DeBose Johnson, same question to you.
We have an excellent model, an excellent model with Women Wednesday. We have an excellent model, an excellent model with Women Wednesday. Barbara does a good job in ensuring that women and minority businesses are seen, are valued, they're supported. I would love to see more of our funding go towards helping small and minority-owned businesses, especially women-owned businesses. My answer for the Doak situation is I would absolutely not have funded Doak Campbell Stadium. That was a want, not a need, especially in a time where so many people are hurting.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
My answer was no. It's been consistent the whole time. And I suggest that when you look at candidates, you look at what their position has been when the votes were happening as a much more accurate place of what their answers and beliefs are. The problem with the money being gone is not something we can just move past. The issue is not only that that's not what that money was meant for. The issue with giving away that much money and leaving our coffers empty is that we cannot provide affordable housing. We cannot provide affordable childcare. We cannot build sidewalks. We cannot do any of these community programs because that money is gone. And we will suffer in all those areas for 10 years. So the reason we are still talking about it is because that's a lot of money that we will suffer in our community and people will be left behind for a decade because of one special project that nobody voted for intended to go to.
Thank you. Jay Revel, your turn. Wrap us up.
Speaking of the intentions behind those dollars, I went to every single committee meeting that happened of our citizens group that came together to help form this iteration of Blueprint Tax. And I remember the debates about whether or not to include economic development dollars. And they never once discussed funding stadium. So I would be a hard no on spending those dollars for that purpose because I've seen what happens when we do use those dollars in the right way. I think about just down the road here, Danfoss Turbicore. They're about to have a $45 million expansion, basically doubling, almost tripling the size of their campus here. And not only does it affect those high-wage jobs that are going to come to our community, but I've also seen what it does because one of my clients is going to construct that building. It's the single largest project they've ever built. It's going to change the trajectory of their company, blue-collar jobs. These are tradespeople. It's really cool to see when our community gets it right, but unfortunately, on the Doak vote, we got it wrong.
Thank you. Now for the follow-up. Was there a middle ground here? And if there was, why couldn't we reach it? 30 seconds, and it's to you, Dustin Rivas.
I wish there would have been, but from every conversation I've had, not one single city or county commissioner reached out to the people at FSU in charge of making that decision. That's what I've been told, whether that's true or false, that's the questions that I've asked. It wasn't even on the table to negotiate. It wasn't even on the table. And so I don't think I fully answered the question. I would have voted no as well. And I've always would have voted no. I cannot stand the way that this happened.
Thank you. Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I think there could have been some middle ground, and there is a missed opportunity for that. But I think that poses another question. When we're talking about working together and making decisions, even with people you disagree with, you have to find a way to come to consensus. You have to find middle ground. But we missed that opportunity, but I hope we've learned from it.
David O'Keefe, was there a middle ground?
We all here have agreed that it was the wrong decision. When we talk about negotiating middle ground, we're talking about tax dollars. We're not talking about negotiating a new car purchase. The issue here is that this money was not meant for this stadium maintenance. And a very influential group requested this money and skipped the line of all the community programs that were already on the list that are not funded. No, there was not middle ground. There is no middle ground when you are talking about the right way to use our taxpayer resources.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
You know, I have admired Commissioner Dozier, who currently holds this seat's position on stadium funding from day one. I just don't think that was what the intent was behind the creation of this 12% for economic development. I think she's correct in that. And I do think there's obviously opportunity. There could have been compromise on this. But if you go back to the root of it, it's just not what these dollars were intended to be.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to change things up a little bit and change up the pace. We are doing our lightning round. What does that mean? It means I'm looking for an answer that is about one sentence. Now, of course, you can kind of add that and, you can add the because. But we know teachers don't like those really run-on sentences, so we're going to try to avoid that. But short's the name of the game. We're going to go quick. We're going to start with the top of the order with Paula DeBoltz Johnson. What single thing makes District Five distinct from all others?
I'd say the people. I love people, which is why I am an advocate. But the people and whether they agree with some of the decisions we make or not, they are important. They are part of this community, so it's the people.
David O'Keefe.
District Five starts downtown at the Capitol, runs all the way out to the rural areas at the edge of the county. We have one of the most diverse ecosystems and some of the most beautiful parks that deserve protecting.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
I think it's our neighborhoods. The last three nights I've been knocking on doors, I've been in Indian Head Acres, Southwood, and Lafayette Park. They couldn't be more completely different from each other, but they're wonderful in all their own ways.
Thank you. Dustin Rivas.
I definitely think it's our parks and our trails, along with how many schools we have in our district.
Thank you. David O'Keefe, you get to start us off on the next question. How many county commission meetings have you attended? And how many have you spoken at and on what topics?
Sure. Primarily, I attend via Zoom, especially when we talk about workshops, since we now know, or as I have learned, that public does not get to comment at workshops, which is unfortunate because that's where most of the details are covered. And especially all the Blueprint meetings.
All right, Jay Revel, same question.
I went to about every one for five years when I started my career working at the Leon County Commission. And I later got to serve on the Leon County Charter Review. So got to speak at quite a few.
Thank you. Dustin Rivas.
Recently, I've been attending every single one that I can actually physically get to. So over the past couple of months, every single one. And the issue that I'm currently talking on is the Lake Hall Schoolhouse preservation.
Thank you. Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I can't tell you how many I've been to in person and via Zoom. And primarily, just to find out what's going on in the county and to share reports as committee member.
Thank you. Jay Revel, you get to start us off next. What should be done about the Lake's Hall Schoolhouse that was just mentioned?
Yeah, I think a lot about our history. Two years, Tallahassee and Leon County turned 200 years old. I think we need to do our best in telling the story in whole of who we are as a community. And I admire the commission for taking pathways to do that.
Thank you. Dustin Rivas, same question.
I think the county needs to find a way to correct a wrong. There is a property line on two that's going right between the Lake Hall Schoolhouse. It's the oldest African-American schoolhouse in the state of Florida. And I think it's a part of our community's history and heritage that needs to be preserved.
Thank you. Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
It's our heritage, and it must be preserved. So they got it right.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
It must be preserved. And if we could go back in time, we should have started using all our authority to do so months ago. As you've recently learned, that investors have bought the areas around it as late as April. And it seems very odd and perhaps a weird investment decision on such a hot topic.
Thank you. Dustin Rivas, you got the next question. What does the word progress for Leon County mean to you?
Progress to me means a trend line up. We have to realize that we cannot always be headed up. You can always take two steps forward, one step back, two steps forward. As long as we are continuing strides to move forward, we're making progress.
Thank you. Paula DeBoltz Johnson, same question.
I'm doing something a little bit different so that we can move our community forward, not sticking to the old ways.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
Progress will be measured in how many members of our community get to participate in our growth and our success, not just how many projects and ribbon cuttings we can open.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
I will echo again that we have to grow in a way that works for everyone. And that includes being an ambitious community.
All right, Paula DeBoltz Johnson. What's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected?
Hmm, expansion or additional resources in our CHSP and our other funding that we provide to citizens.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
If you elect me, I will only do this job. I will not consult. I will not do marketing. I will not do PR. I will not have accounting clients. This will be my one job for my entire term for you.
Jay Revel.
I believe we need to engage our community in a process that sets Tallahassee and Leon County on a path towards a very bold future. And engaging our community like we never have before is something I am very much committed to doing on day one.
Dustin Rivas.
I will work for the people and not to be reelected. And we need to, like Jay said, we need to be able to find ways to engage the 47,000 constituents we have in District Five in ways other than email, Facebook, and three minutes at your county commission meeting. I'll create technology and help.
Thank you. I'm actually going to ping off of David O'Keefe's answer here. The county commissioner job is actually considered a full-time job. Will you continue your other employment? And tell us what that employment is, starting with you, Jay Revel.
Sure. So two years ago, I started a company called Revel Media. We do branding and consulting in that marketing space, and I will continue to do that because I've got a wife and two kids who very much depend on me being able to do so.
Thank you. Dustin Rivas.
I will absolutely continue to do the work that I'm doing now. I currently own four companies with almost 20 employees. And the best part about that is I put people in positions to make good decisions and run organizations. I will continue to do so.
Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I am actually a Leon County employee, and I have a small nonprofit here in the city. I will absolutely quit my Leon County job if elected.
Thank you. David O'Keefe, you've kind of already answered this, but is there anything else you want to say on that?
I do. Up until a few months ago, my job was as Chief Finance Officer right here at WFSU. And I've left that and am giving up that safe, secure, enjoyable job to pursue this job because I want only to be useful to the people of Leon County.
All right, David O'Keefe, we're going to stay with you to start the next question. As a county commissioner, you will be working with your counterparts in the city commission. Toward that end, who will you endorse for mayor of Tallahassee and why?
I will not be endorsing anyone for mayor of Tallahassee. First of all, not many people know me yet, and I'm not elected, so I don't know who wants to know. To expand on that, I will work with anyone who is elected by the people, and I don't want to impede my chances of working together.
Jay Revel.
I've worked with both Commissioner Dozier and Mayor Daley quite a bit over the years. I'm looking forward to their race. And as my friend David said, I'm not planning to endorse anybody at this time.
Okay, Dustin Rivas.
I agree. I think both of them are very qualified. There's no endorsement needed. I'm looking forward to working with either of them in the future.
Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I would not endorse any candidate. I'm running my race.
All right, well, I'm going to take another shot at that endorsement question anyway. Obviously, this is a nonpartisan race, but there is always the top of the ticket. The top of the ticket is the governor's office. Who is your pick for governor, Jay Revel?
I'm not sure who I'm going to vote for in the Democratic primary yet. I'm still undecided, but paying close attention and eager to see who will come out of that.
Okay, Dustin Rivas.
I don't think there's a Republican primary, so that settles that.
All right, Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I absolutely know who I wouldn't vote for.
All right, David O'Keefe.
I would be voting for the Democratic candidate in the general. And primarily, I'm focused on our local elections here where we can actually have more of an impact.
Okay. Well, I've got one more unrelated question, and then we'll get back to me. At this moment, the January 6th hearing is occurring. One reader emailed us this question and said it's important beyond all others. Do you believe that Donald Trump had the 2020 election stolen from him? We start with you, Dustin Rivas.
I don't think so. I think the current president is the President of the United States. And as far as January 6th, anybody who broke the law in any manner whatsoever, including the former president, should be prosecuted to the fullest extent.
Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
We know that our election system is fine. And anyone that wants to continue with this revisionist history should go somewhere and sit down. That's ridiculous. So no, he didn't have it stolen. I forgot to actually answer the question. I'm sorry about that.
David O'Keefe.
No.
Jay Revel.
No. In fact, the only person trying to steal the election in 2020 was Donald Trump.
All right. Have you received any bundled contributions from developers or others who give under numerous corporation names or related individuals? Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
Absolutely not.
David O'Keefe.
Absolutely not, and I will not be.
Jay Revel.
Yes, I have.
Dustin Rivas.
No, I have not.
David O'Keefe, aside from family, who do you view as your local mentor in life? And in pursuing the seat, and I'm going to echo, aside from family, David O'Keefe.
Sure. I don't really have a local mentor, really. I don't have connections to political people with political experience here. Most of my personal mentors have just led me to believe that I should do what I can to help people.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
When I think about the kind of elected official I'd like to be, I think about Bill Monford. I watched his eulogy of Commissioner Jimbo Jackson a few weeks ago, and it really, again, reiterated all the reasons why I think he's the kind of elected official we need more of.
Dustin Rivas.
When I first made this announcement, the encouragement I got from the business community, the tech community, and the sustainable Tallahassee community is what kept me pushing going forward.
Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
I have a lot of mentors, but the one that shines brightly is Anita Davis. I think that she is probably the one that stands out most in my mind.
Thank you. Jay Revel, name one specific thing the county is not spending enough money on and one thing the county is spending too much money on. Jay.
I think, again, I go back to housing affordability. I think there's a lot of creative things that we can do there, looking at other communities that are being successful. That's certainly an area that we need to improve on. As far as spending too much money, you know, I love our parks and our trails and the way that we preserve our natural beauty here. But until we can get focused on solving some of the big challenges that we have, I think we'd have to make sure we're not going above and beyond on some of the other departments and stay focused on solving our challenges.
Dustin Rivas.
I think some of the things that we're spending too much money on is overlapping services that private may be doing, especially in the nonprofit world. One thing I think we're not spending enough money on is infrastructure and roads and sidewalks.
Can you give an example of overlap?
When you have, you know, a lot of different nonprofits that are doing things that the government's trying to do with affordable housing, with food insecurities, and some other things. I think we have a lot of nonprofits trying to do a lot of good work. And what we also have, you know, our county government trying to do the same thing.
Okay, Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
Not enough money on expanding services for our nonprofits and the people that really need it. We've already spent a lot of money in terms of Doak, so I'm going to kind of let the question rest there.
David O'Keefe.
We are not spending enough money on expanding affordable housing. We are spending too much money on housing people in the Leon County detention facility.
Thank you. Last question in the lightning round. You've almost made it. Dustin Rivas, what is the single biggest thing, I'm going to echo that again, single biggest thing you have done in the community to make your district a better place to live? Dustin Rivas.
Wow, single. I'd say foster economic development through my private businesses.
Okay, Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
My continued support of young people in this community.
David O'Keefe.
Since it has to be the single biggest thing, giving up a year of income to pursue this seat so that I can dedicate all of my experience to improving this district.
Jay Revel.
10 years ago, I led an effort to create what was called the Midtown Action Plan. And starting next month, our Blueprint sales tax dollars will spend $26 million to upgrade the sense of place in Midtown over the next two years.
Thank you. You all did it. Take a breath. We're back to some normal questions with more space here.
Great. So we're going to get started with an ethics discussion. Please discuss whether you feel current ethics codes for Leon County government and for the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency are adequate, especially regarding lobbyist regulation. What would you support, excuse me, would you support independent ethics oversight of either or both? One minute.
We're at the top of the order.
And we're going to start with you, Paula DeBoltz Johnson.
So I think that we do a fairly good job in terms of ethics and making sure that we're doing the right thing in Leon County. Whether or not we need reform, I think that we should always be paying attention to a way to do things better and make sure that we're transparent in our dealings. There was a third part to that question.
Would you support independent ethics oversight of either the county or Blueprint IA?
I absolutely would not have an issue with that. So yes, I would.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
I believe we are not currently doing enough for ethics and transparency, and that's reflected by the response of the voters. I would support an independent ethics board over Blueprint by perhaps expanding the Tallahassee Ethics Independent Board via an inter-local via an inter-local agreement. And I do want to point out that I'd be happy to be under a uh, independent ethics boards on the county commission. But I want to make a point that part of the problem with our ethics is how people get elected and fund campaigns, and then who they have to serve when they're in office. And until we elect leaders who truly are there for the right purpose, ordinance was, ordinances will only do enough to curtail the problem.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
I absolutely think we should always land on the side of more transparency. Uh, recent discussions about the Blueprint IA and all that, you know, we can't get into details, but at the end of the day, if people in our community feel like something's not transparent, we have work to do. Uh, and as far as, you know, being under the uh, watchful eye of an independent uh, ethics board, I like that idea of maybe doing some joint inter-local agreement there. I'm not sure we need multiple boards there, but some board that can overlook our community is um, uh, another level on top of what we do with the state, I think, would be useful.
Thank you. Dustin Rivers.
I think if you're not for more transparency, you're not in the right, you know, line of work here. Um, a lot of the conversation lately has been around sunshine laws. Um, sunshine laws are not who they apply to. Uh, I would, I'd like to see more transparent, open conversations when it comes to Blueprint and other activities between uh, our county and our city.
Thank you. We're gonna have a follow-up on this one. We'll be back to you, Paula DeBolt Johnson. Forty-five seconds on this one. So you all obviously do not sit on the city commission, excuse me, county commission, but you work hand in hand with commissioners on matters of growth and administering the Blueprint sales tax dollars. So last week, we saw another former uh, commissioner indicted. What immediately went through your mind when you heard the news? And should the county be doing anything in response?
So I, that's a great question. So what went through my mind? It, there are systems in place to ensure that people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, that they will be held accountable. Um, and I think that you should let those groups that are responsible for handling those issues do that. That is the way that I will answer that question.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
I thought it was sad that we have to keep seeing this. And I think that um, it quickly brought me to, this is not about one person or two people. This is about the way a system of influence and political power work. And I think that until we elect a complete new crop of leaders who do not come from that system and that network, we will continue to see this.
And should the county, we're forgetting that second part of the question. Just remind everyone, should the county be doing anything in response? So Jay Revel, we'll go to you.
Uh, the first thing I thought about um, after reading the indictment was Andrew and his family, um, who he is as a person. I, I feel um, that he must have gone through a really difficult time. He's about to go through an even more difficult time. Um, I think our community deserves to have transparency and change. I think that we need to make sure that everyone in our community feels confident that their leaders are there for the right reason. And I think that um, we have a lot of work to do to still get to that place. Uh, every time there's a story like that, our level of confidence and our ability to believe in what people are telling us drops. And that's a huge problem, and we have to make strides to change that. And as far as the county goes, I'm not sure I know anything specific yet off the top of my head, but I think we certainly have to have conversations about it.
Thank you. And you'll finish us off on this one, Dustin Rivers.
Absolutely. You know, like Jay, the first thing I did was actually pray for his family. You know, there's a lot, there's a big, long, tough road ahead for him. Um, I don't think our county and our community is, is past where this corruption and, and issues are actually at. Um, at the same time, I believe a man is innocent until proven guilty and time will tell here. Um, county's position, I don't think the county needs to currently do anything besides keep a, uh, keep a needle on the transparency right now. Continue to do that.
Thank you.
All right, our next question will have 45 seconds per candidate for an answer. The question is, what is your position on the Supreme Court's ruling? And does the county have a place in the abortion discussion? And Jay Revel, we'll start with you. No, I'm sorry. David O'Keefe, I think we're starting with you. I got a little bit out of order there.
My position is that it's an abomination and a threat to our, uh, everyone's rights to bodily autonomy. And I uh, continue to rally um, with all groups that are fighting for women's right to choose. And the county's role uh, can, can think of any creative way to prevent enforcement of any new laws that would crack down or punish women who make choices about their body.
Jay Revel, same question.
I think the Supreme Court continues to move our country into a more and more divisive place. And um, the news that continues to come out of that body um, continues to disappoint. Um, when I think about what we can do here on the local level, you know, I think we have to make sure that our local government are allies uh, to women, uh, particularly those uh, seeking reproductive health, whether we're talking about our county employees or whether we're talking about citizens who are seeking access to that care through our Leon County Health Department. We have to make sure we're doing everything we can uh, to make sure that reproductive health is widely accessible here in our community.
And Dustin Rivers, same question.
Well, I agree with everything Jay said. I think our, our local um, electeds spend too much time on things that they can't necessarily control. Um, I have, you know, this, this ruling is putting the, the, the power into the state's hands. So um, I, I, no mention whatsoever in this ruling had anything to do with local rule or anything like that. So, I mean, they're passing the buck to the states, and it's up to the states to decide this.
Paula DeBolt Johnson.
Um, I absolutely believe in a woman's right to choose, and I do mean a woman's right to choose. And of course, they got it wrong. And we're, we're, we're gonna fight this. But again, what happens for us in terms of what the county can do is, again, provide support for those women who, who have questions about what it is they need to do, about their reproductive health. Whatever needs they have, we can support that through the county. Um, but I also know that that is just one of the many things that this court will continue to do, and people need to be paying attention. I think we've been asleep for too long, and if we don't wake up, we'll see a lot more of our rights being snatched away from us.
Thank you. Uh, our next question is one-minute answer. Um, we're starting with you, Jay Revel. Local government is criticized by some citizens as being more responsive to the business and development community than to ordinary citizens. Some candidates have even targeted the Chamber of Commerce as a insider's network that benefits special interests. Is this perception fair? And if so, what should be done about it? Jay Revel.
I know a few things about the Chamber of Commerce. Spent a few years working there. A lot of great people in that building, a lot of great people in that membership. Uh, there's over 1,400 members of the Chamber of Commerce, and about 95% of them are small businesses with less than 20 employees. Uh, there are no smoke-filled rooms, there are no back chambers that uh, weird nefarious conversations are happening in. Um, what I can tell you is that you've got a lot of hard-working people who put uh, folks to work every single day, who come together to try to learn how to do more business in Tallahassee. Now, are there people who participate in the political process? Certainly, uh, and everyone I've ever seen or known in that space does so legally and does so above board.
Thank you. Dustin Rivers, same question.
Can you repeat that question in a second?
Sure. So local government's criticized by some citizens as being more responsive to the business and development community than to ordinary citizens. Some candidates have even targeted the Chamber of Commerce as a insider's network that benefits special interests. Is this perception fair? And if so, what should be done about it?
I think it's misguided perception. I, I think at the root of this is, I don't think our local electeds um, have the heartbeat of their actual constituents. I think that it's, it's a lot easier to talk to the chamber or the chambers and, and get information that's under public spotlight. But again, I think we need to find ways to get more of our community and citizens engaged in the process and hear from them. Taking time out of your day to go three minutes, to stand up for three minutes, wait an hour, and then talk three minutes, or sending emails, uh, or posting on Facebook, um, when you have constituencies that are that large, I don't think that we have enough data to have compassionate conversations.
Thank you. Paula DeBolt Johnson, question.
So perception is everything, but I, I think, much to my opponent's point, people need to learn a little bit more about what the chamber is doing. Um, we need the business community in order to make things work. They are some of our largest employers here, and along with the universities. But some of the great things they're doing are helping our schools. And I don't know if the community is aware of this, so I think that it would be important for our community to learn a little bit more about what all of the chambers are doing, and for the chamber to do a better job about informing our community about their efforts and all of the great things that they're doing in our community as well.
Thank you. David O'Keefe.
I think the assessment is accurate about chamber leadership. Not 95% who are small businesses who are paying members to be able to network and get business. Chamber leadership here, in this town, tends to historically promote and support big businesses that can afford uh, client relations and government relations and lobbying firms. And it's part of the problem. Uh, one of our, uh, we, we heard mentioned there's no smoke-filled rooms and nefarious conversations. There's not, but that, that's a problem. The issue is, you don't have to have those conversations because candidates are told, don't say something that would tick off a donor or a big business because you need their money, and voters don't pay attention anyways. If a candidate is gonna run a race like that, how are they ever gonna stand up and vote against leadership on big businesses and influential peddlers if they weren't gonna uh, campaign against it? And the issue again is, it's an accurate assessment of how our local leadership in the chamber has historically represented.
Thank you. And a 30-second follow-up. I mean, what does it tell you that we have three different chambers of commerce? Dustin Rivers.
Uh, the fact that we have three different chambers of commerce is, I, I think are great. Um, I think that you have business size, different business sizes in different areas and different services. And I think uh, we need to get behind all of them. Um, they all bring different things to the table for the different uh, types of businesses in the communities at large. So I think it's fantastic that we have those options.
Thank you. Paula DeBolt Johnson.
I think each of the chambers meet a unique need for the people in which they serve. So I think um, that having the three of them, you get in with the one that gives you what you need. So I think it's a great opportunity.
David O'Keefe.
I think it indicates that the folks who started those other two chambers weren't getting served and represented by the main chamber.
Thank you. Jay Revel.
Yeah, I think, you know, you've seen more cooperation amongst those three chambers in recent years probably than, than any time uh, that I've ever uh, been in the community. Um, I, again, I think to Paula's point, you've got a, a great situation where there are people trying to do different things uh, in organizing in order to get them done. Uh, and I commend all of our chambers of commerce for trying to represent the interests of, of their members.
Thank you.
Okay, Paula DeBolt Johnson, we're gonna start with you on this next one. You have a one-minute response period. Climate change can sometimes feel like too distant a concern when we are struggling with so many challenges in our community today. So I have a three-part question for you. Are there signs of climate change that you see in Leon County? Who is or will be most affected by them? And what, if anything, can we do about it?
So, climate change is absolutely real. Um, in part of my work with emergency management um, and providing volunteer support, it's easy to see the people that are most impacted, and those are your poor. Those are your um, folks that may be disabled and poor, your seniors. And especially if something happens to um, their dwellings, that, that could cause a lot of issue for them. The third part of yours, your question was?
What, if anything, can we do about it?
So when we're talking about building new structures, and I, and I hear about the tiny houses and all of these things that we're talking about to um, solve the homeless issue, we've gotta make sure that these things are structurally sound because one big storm comes through, that entire community could be gone. So we've gotta pay attention to the way in which we're building structures. And we can also make sure that for those older homes, we provide funding through um, the county to shore up their homes and make sure that they're up to code and can withstand storms.
Thank you. David O'Keefe, same question. Are there signs of climate change you see in Leon County? Who is or will be most affected, and what, if anything, can we do about it?
I think there are absolutely signs, and it's here now. We were just talking about extreme heat waves last week and a danger to people just being outside. We see the strongest hurricane seasons on record, year after year. It's absolutely here. The people, first, everyone will be affected, no one can uh, escape. However, unfortunately, if we don't do anything, the same people who are always left out of solutions and when we choose who we help, the people who are living in poorer areas who can't afford to move to higher ground. If we don't step up and help them, those are the ones who are most effective. Yes, there's a lot we have to do about this. We have to invest in this now, not only to prevent further damage to the environment and further carbon emissions, but we also need to plan for the more extreme weather uh, events. We can't build shelters and infrastructure and buildings now that stand up to today's severe weather. We have to think forward decades in the future so that those withstand even more severe weather. And that's something the county is absolutely capable of doing.
Thank you. Jay Revel, same to you.
I see signs of climate change every time I go knock on doors uh, in recent weeks. It was 106 degrees at 6:30 PM last Wednesday in Southwood, and me and my uh, volunteer looked at each other and said, "Okay, I guess something's happening." Uh, you know, I think about design and intentionality a lot um, as it relates to our community, but also as it relates to climate change and how we um, make ourselves more adequate for the things that are coming our way in the future. Um, the way that we design buildings, the way that we design our neighborhoods, the way that we design streets and infrastructure, all of that is critically important. And we have to codify the character of our community. Right now, you know, there's a lot of debate and contention about how we're growing and what development looks like. But all of those developments that are happening are happening uh, through our code. They're using our code to do what they're doing. We have to change our code in a way that reflects who we want to be in the future. And I don't believe we have that right now.
Thank you. Dustin Rivers, you'll finish us off here.
Yeah. All I know is it's uh, hotter than, in June than any other June I can remember in the past 35 years since I've been alive. Um, so um, that paints a picture here. Who's affected the most? Our homeless population, uh, people who use public transportation, um, our public workers and our small business owners who are out cutting lawns and doing landscaping and any services outside. Um, what can be done about this? You know, um, that's, that's yet to be seen. I think we need to, to look at our public infrastructure needs and address the issues when it comes to that. Um, I think, you know, we need to come up with solutions that will, you know, address specific needs for all these different areas. I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all um, solution, especially when you talk about public infrastructure versus public workers who are cutting the grass and other things outside.
Thank you.
All right, our next question is a two-part question. Um, the question is, the county administrator serves at the pleasure of the county commission. Vince Long has been serving as county administrator since 2011. What letter grade would you give to Vince Long this year and why? And what's he done well, and what could he do better? David O'Keefe, you have one minute.
Um, as a candidate for county commission and hopeful commissioner, I'm not gonna publicly rate an individual employee's performance. Uh, it's not the way I would do overseeing HR when I worked here at WFSU, and it's not the way I would oversee uh, performance of someone in a public forum. However, um, what I will say is that our county does excellent in some areas. Emergency management and its emergency operations, and then all our parks and trails are outstanding. There are areas we can improve, like in expanding and adding funding to the Office of Environmental Stewardship and in public transparency. And I think we can get there.
Jay Revel, same question.
Well, I would give the county administrator Vince Long an A. I think he's done a wonderful job shepherding our community through the pandemic and other trying things that have come our way since he was first hired. I would tell you, he does a great job doing and managing the strategic plan that considers the interests of our commissioners as it relates to the organization, Leon County Government, right? Thousands of employees, a very important organization, does a great job running that. I think we have room to improve on how we plan for the future of our community and how our community works together, grows together, and works for everybody.
I think Vince has an incredibly difficult job to do and to manage, and he has a lot of opinions that come about. I'm not in any position to give him a letter grade. I would not do so with him or any other public employee.
Thank you, Dustin Rivers. And then Paula DeBolt Johnson.
I will absolutely not rate my boss on public television. But what I will say is that I applaud Vince. As an employee, I, I see firsthand what he has to deal with in terms of making sure that he's meeting the needs of our employees as well as making sure that he balances that with the community's needs. And I will also say, as I told him privately, I am very proud of the stance that he took when it was time for us to deal with the pandemic. He did something that a lot of people were afraid to do. He stood boldly and proudly and said what he needed to, to keep us safe, because that's the other part of what people don't think about. We hear people making a lot of noise, but we were still at work making sure that the county got everything that they needed, that our, our neighbors were taken care of and still getting the job done and having us there every day. But he kept us safe, and I applaud him for that.
All right, y'all made it to the finish line, which means you have 90 seconds to make the case directly to voters. Why should voters vote for you? Jay Revel, you get to start us off on the closing arguments.
Wonderful. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here, everybody. It's, really means a lot to all of us and certainly to our community. We live in an incredible place. Leon County is just a very special community and a place that I love dearly and with all my heart. But we do have some big challenges to tackle, and they are very present and real in our community today. But we can do it. We can come together, we can build consensus, we can create a bold vision for our future. And I've spent my whole career trying to make Tallahassee and Leon County a better place to live, somewhere that we can all be proud of. And I want to do that work for you all now as your next Leon County Commissioner from District 5. And as you're seeking out information and looking to make a choice about which candidate you're gonna support in this race, I hope you'll visit our website at votejrevel.com. You can read our position on various issues, you can read my plan for how to tackle those challenges. And I just, it has been one of the great pleasures of my career and life to run alongside these other candidates, to be here in this process. And I really am grateful to everyone in our community for the opportunity.
Dustin Rivers.
Thank you again for hosting this, and thank you, everybody here, for showing up and putting the valuable feedback. I think what you can see here is that we agree on most things. I think the difference here is, you know, your, what you do in your public life right now and your private life right now. And with my businesses, I'm solving problems every single day, be that with an employee, a client, a vendor, a project. The problems have to get solved right now. We can't wait to create a vision. We need action right now. We need results. If you're looking some, looking for somebody to bring results with problem-solving abilities that does it on a daily basis, I ask you to go to my website at DustinRivers.com and find out more information about me. I am a lifelong resident of District 5, attending Chairs Elementary School, Swift Creek, and Lincoln High School. I know our district intimately, as I've grown up here my entire life, and I look to serve, I look forward to serving the constituents of District 5 in the future as your next county commissioner.
Thank you. Paula DeBolt Johnson.
Thank you all for having this forum for us. I enjoyed sitting here and learning from these gentlemen and hearing their thoughts. But for you all, I am Paula DeBolt Johnson. I'm the most experienced, educated, and proven candidate for Leon County Commission 5. I've spent my entire career solving the most pressing problems of this community, especially when it relates to youth and families. We need a candidate who has already proven their commitment to Leon County Government, and they're ready to walk into the job on day one prepared, to do the work. They call politics a game. Time for games is over, school is out. I'm the one ready to do the work, see real change happen right here in our community. So I don't have to be one of those people that rest on the laurels of other elected, other elected officials. I don't have to read from the playbook from another group or buy political favors. You see me do the work here in this community. So I hope that you will look at my record and make your decision to vote for me as your next Leon County Commissioner. You can learn more about me, my platform, my experience at www.i'mwithpaula.com. I would appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. David O'Keefe, you have the last word.
I'm not a PR person, I'm not a marketing person, I don't do digital advertising, I don't do consulting. I don't know how to sell you on something via communication. I'm a certified public accountant who's been in public service for 15 years. I, like many people, decided to run on a ballot with over 50 local candidates this year because we see that the old way of doing business and the way things have done historically with the old boys' network, if you will, or an inside group, is not working for the people of Leon County. I bring the experience of CFO, overseeing public nonprofits and governments for 15 years. I know how things should work, I know how to solve problems that we face, and I know how to bring people together to have a community solution to all of the problems facing Leon County. And I'm running to be your county commissioner, and that's all I want to do for the next four years. I will always put people first, and I will make sure that we improve the community we live in for every one of our neighbors. You can look me up at davidforleon.com. I'm looking for your trust and your vote on August 23rd. And if you want to see me in office, I'm also looking for your volunteering and your small donations because, as we said before, our campaign is a grassroots one, not accepting donations from big developers, lobbying firms, or influence peddlers.
Great. Thank you all for your responses, and thank you for joining us today for this program. Thank you to the Tallahassee Democrat, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU Public Media. And you can find a replay of this forum on our YouTube pages at tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be this Thursday, June 30th, at 11:00 AM on WFSU 88.9 FM.
And our next forum will be Thursday, June 30th, at 1:00 PM, and it will be with the four candidates for Leon County Commission at-large Group 2, Rudolph Ferguson, Sr., Josh Johnson, Nick Maddox, and Dominique Danielle Zumbo.
I'd like to thank the crew here at WFSU for this excellent forum platform. I'd also like to thank the audience and for all those in the audience who have sent us questions over the last few days. You can do that by emailing news@tallahassee.com. I would imagine for those that have seen questions, you have seen them pop up in these forums. So thank you for that. You can also look for our special elections section of the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all the candidates on the ballot, which will be printed and inserted on the Sunday, August 7th edition. You'll be hearing from us. Thank you all for joining us. Have a great day.